America and each Republican for which it stands, one nation, one God, and the universal with liberty and justice.
Julie, could you take a roll call, please?
Heather Logan.
Present.
Rob Toyer.
Here.
Debra Nelson.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
Leish Knoback.
Here.
Ivan Galardo.
Here.
Jan Schweddy.
Present.
Okay, before the approval of the agenda, Paul has an item he would like to add.
Yes, I'd like to request that council amend the agenda tonight to add an eighth item to new business. That would be the 188th project bid rejection.
Okay, Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the agenda to include the amended addition of an item number eight.
Second.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to start off our meeting tonight with a special award to the Kiwanis Club of Arlington for all their years of service and representation for our city and stuff, all the good things they've done. It is with great pride and honor that we recognize the outstanding contributions of the Kiwanis Club of Arlington. Since its inception on August 17, 1954, the club has been a pillar of the community's support and a beacon of services within Arlington. Over the years, the Kiwanis Club has consistently invested in the future of our youth by providing countless scholarships to graduating high school seniors at both Arlington and Lakewood High Schools. They have been involved with the Boys and Girls Club capital improvement projects through the years, fostering safe environments for our children to grow and thrive. The club's impact is also seen through their initiative of distributing dictionaries to all third graders in the Darrington, Lakewood, and Arlington school districts. The funds to support these causes have been raised through community events like the sales of Christmas wreaths and the Fourth of July auction. The Kiwanis Club was always willing to support the city. They adopted Legion Park, supporting us with annual work parties. They helped build the playground at Jensen Park and the labyrinth at Lebanon Park. For the past 71 years, their dedication and selflessness have not only served countless individuals but have also strengthened the very fabric of our community. As we reflect on the extraordinary legacy left by the Kiwanis Club of Arlington, we must also acknowledge the bittersweet news that the club is now retiring and discontinuing its operations. While we are deeply saddened by this chapter coming to a close, we are profoundly grateful for the mark the club has made on our community. On behalf of the City of Arlington, I extend our sincerest thanks to each member of the Kiwanis Club. Your legacy will continue to inspire and remind us of what community service truly embodies. And I'd like to present this with you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much for all you've done.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Proclamation recognizing the Farmers Market Week. Ivan.
Whereat, I'm gonna stand for this because I'm very proud of my shirt, too. In case you missed it, the new design for this year. Whereas farmers markets are essential to the vitality of Washington communities, supporting local farmers and producers while connecting residents to fresh, locally grown food and whereas the Arlington Farmers Market, a proud program of the Stilly Valley Chamber Foundation, serves as a vibrant gathering place in the heart of downtown Arlington, offering a direct connection between local farms, small food businesses, artisans, and the community. And whereas the Arlington Farmers Market champions food access for all through vital programs including EBT, SNAP Market Watch, WIC Cash Benefits, the Farmers Market Nutrition Program for Seniors and WIC, and the Sun Bucks Program, ensuring that fresh and nutritious food is available to households of all income levels. And whereas the market also hosts the Kids' Pop Power of Produce Club, sponsored by Grocery Outlet, offering weekly learning experiences focused on nutrition, science, and the environment, and providing children ages two to 12 with tokens to try to find, to try new fruits and vegetables. And whereas the Arlington Farmers Market supports over 17 farms, meat, fish, veggie, berry, and flower, flowers, and 150 local vendors, contributing to the local economy, strengthening small businesses, and fostering a sense of community, pride, and belonging. And whereas National Farmers Market Week, celebrated across the country, honors the important role markets play in supporting healthy communities, resilient food systems, and strong local economies. Now therefore, Don Vanny, Mayor of the City of Arlington, Washington, does hereby proclaim the week of August 3 through August 10 as Farmers Market Week in Arlington, Washington, and encourages all residents and visitors to support our local farmers, artisans, and food producers by shopping at the Arlington Farmers Market and celebrating the essential role markets play in our lives.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment for the members of the public who wish to speak to the council. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Please state your name and address. Looks like first one I have is Joe Beardsley.
Thank you, Council. My name's Joe Beardsley and I live right here downtown. And this last week, I want to let everyone know that I have been working with Diane with the Farmers Market and due to my health and stuff, I might need some help getting volunteers because I injured myself pretty bad. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next person is Jay Lindberg. Jay, looks like he left. Okay, Jerry Rugdwee.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Following the discussion at the July 7 city council meeting and subsequent July 28 workshop, I wanted to provide some clarification regarding the LTAC committee's recommendations and the processes we followed. I'd like to take a few moments to walk through how funding decisions were made, address some of the concerns raised during both meetings, and reinforce the integrity of the review process. We understand and respect the council's oversight role and hope this added context will support continued collaboration in making data-driven decisions that benefit Arlington's tourism economy. The LTAC committee carefully reviewed all submitted grant applications using the established rating criteria created by a previous council to ensure consistency, fairness, and transparency. Each committee member independently scored the applications prior to our meeting. During our review, we discussed all proposals thoroughly, and as a result, our final scores and recommendations were in alignment. After watching both the July 7 council meeting and the July 28 workshop, I became increasingly concerned by some of the comments made regarding the committee's recommendations. It felt as though the integrity of the committee's work was being questioned despite the thoughtful, structured, and unbiased process we followed. These comments did not reflect the time, effort, or data-driven methodology that went into every decision made. One point raised was the percentage of total funding awarded to a single event, specifically 23% of total LTAC funding, and the claim that overnight stay data may have been inflated due to the mention of only two hotels. In reality, we received lodging tax dollars from four hotels within the Arlington city limits, not just two. It was also intimated that overnight stays were primarily attributed to event workers. However, those same workers often returned later with friends or family to experience more of the hometown feel that initially brought them here, creating repeat visits and additional overnight stays that extend far beyond the event itself. While it was also suggested that another event may have been underfunded, all applications were reviewed using the same objective criteria, and funding levels were based on total scores, not on comparison between applicants. For example, the Arlington Farmers Market lost points for not identifying any hotel partnerships, which is clearly outlined in the rating criteria. The City of Arlington's application received a lower score for including Angel of the Winds Casino Resort as a lodging partner, even though that property is outside city limits and does not contribute to the Arlington's LTAC fund. Additionally, Smoky Point was mentioned as not being part of the downtown core, where some believe tourism dollars should be concentrated. However, Smoky Point is fully within Arlington city limits and plays a significant role in the city's tourism economy. Lodging taxes, retail sales, and dining revenue generated in that area directly contribute to the City of Arlington's general.
Excuse me, that's been three, I'm sorry. That's been three minutes. Oh, that's my three, okay. Can I say one more thing?
No, unfortunately.
If council wishes to revise or update the criteria moving forward, we welcome that discussion. We're always open to improving the process. However, any changes should apply to future LTAC cycles to ensure fairness for all applicants.
Jerry, that's the three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like our next speaker, Jordan Kurtz.
Hi, my name's Jordan Kurtz. I own the fountain drive-in in Arlington. I've never been to one of these, so I don't really know how anything goes. I was just coming to reach out and ask for some help in communication with the construction that's going on. I was completely blindsided on vacation with the change of plans that just happened, and it ruined my vacation. Tried to not let it, but it really did. It put a huge tamper on it, and I'm looking for some help for like signage and posters to be able to help us. Thirty years old and have a young family, and we haven't owned the business for 65 years, so just looking for a little help from the city.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the name of your business? I didn't.
The Fountain.
The Fountain, thank you.
Okay, do we have any others that would like to speak at this time? Okay, none seen. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the consent agenda as noted.
Second. Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which will be a public hearing and amendment to development agreement with Baker Moore LLC. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this in the workshop last week. This is the first amendment to the Baker Moore Development Agreement. There's a map within your packet if you need to, some help finding where that development is. This is a mixed-use development on 172nd. The mixed-use element has been provided for, was the first to go in, which is a 55-plus apartment complex. It's on the back, probably about 50% of the property. The last remaining lot is Lot D. It's the smallest piece of property. It fronts 172nd. This proposed amendment would expand the mixed-use allowable uses in that lot to include more highway commercial. Those weren't in your packet when we had the workshop, but they have been added to the packet now. So if you have any questions on what the allowable uses are, this is simply an expansion of the uses to help that property develop due to its size and that it fronts 172nd. We would like to see a little bit more of a retail presence there. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this time, I'd like to open the meeting for public hearing for any public comment. Do we have anybody here for any public comment? Okay, none seen. Then I'll close the public comment portion, and we'll open for council comments. Jan?
Yeah, Paul, do you happen to know, I mean, I was reading all of it, and I was especially a little concerned about the drive-through things. I mean, because I know that property well, and Road 40 goes through up to 173rd. Do you have any idea what they're looking at and what they're wanting if they get this passed?
They're not super specific about it, but they're looking for the high and best use, which would be some kind of a retail presence there, and it could include a drive-through. We've informed them that if there is a drive-through on that lot, there's going to be some work that needs to be done to 40th to accommodate traffic flow because we don't want, you know, traffic to back up onto 172nd. So there'll be some work there, and Jim and Amy and I have discussed it at a high level of what changes can be made.
Well, are they looking at high-rise apartments, too, or is that?
No, they're, although the mixed-use element still remains, so they could do some commercial use on the bottom floor and do a vertical mixed-use in a residential above, primarily they're looking, from our discussions, primarily they're looking at some kind of highway commercial use. So that's like retail, restaurants, stuff like that.
Thank you.
Any other? Heather?
Thank you, John. Paul, when you say retail, that to me means shopping boutique, but I don't know of any drive-through boutiques.
No, it could, you know, it could be, I think the property is programmed for about 16,000 square feet, so it could accommodate a couple of different uses.
Oh, and a drive-through.
And one could be a drive-through, yeah. You know, if it's retail, it probably wouldn't be a drive-through. If it's a restaurant or something like that, it could have that element.
So when you say restaurant and with drive-through, that means a fast food place? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, none heard, then I'll close the public hearing.
Make the motion.
I don't think so. We don't have any action to take on that, right?
Yeah, we do need action tonight.
Yeah. So I move to approve the first amendment to the Baker Moore LLC Development Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement amendment.
Second. Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which will be a public hearing and amendment to development agreement with Baker Moore LLC. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this in the workshop last week. This is the first amendment to the Baker Moore Development Agreement. There's a map within your packet if you need to, some help finding where that development is. This is a mixed-use development on 172nd. The mixed-use element has been provided for, was the first to go in, which is a 55-plus apartment complex. It's on the back, probably about 50% of the property. The last remaining lot is Lot D. It's the smallest piece of property. It fronts 172nd. This proposed amendment would expand the mixed-use allowable uses in that lot to include more highway commercial. Those weren't in your packet when we had the workshop, but they have been added to the packet now. So if you have any questions on what the allowable uses are, this is simply an expansion of the uses to help that property develop due to its size and that it fronts 172nd. We would like to see a little bit more of a retail presence there. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this time, I'd like to open the meeting for public hearing for any public comment. Do we have anybody here for any public comment? Okay, none seen. Then I'll close the public comment portion, and we'll open for council comments. Jan?
Yeah, Paul, do you happen to know, I mean, I was reading all of it, and I was especially a little concerned about the drive-through things. I mean, because I know that property well, and Road 40 goes through up to 173rd. Do you have any idea what they're looking at and what they're wanting if they get this passed?
They're not super specific about it, but they're looking for the high and best use, which would be some kind of a retail presence there, and it could include a drive-through. We've informed them that if there is a drive-through on that lot, there's going to be some work that needs to be done to 40th to accommodate traffic flow because we don't want, you know, traffic to back up onto 172nd. So there'll be some work there, and Jim and Amy and I have discussed it at a high level of what changes can be made.
Well, are they looking at high-rise apartments, too, or is that?
No, they're, although the mixed-use element still remains, so they could do some commercial use on the bottom floor and do a vertical mixed-use in a residential above, primarily they're looking, from our discussions, primarily they're looking at some kind of highway commercial use. So that's like retail, restaurants, stuff like that.
Thank you.
Any other? Heather?
Thank you, John. Paul, when you say retail, that to me means shopping boutique, but I don't know of any drive-through boutiques.
No, it could, you know, it could be, I think the property is programmed for about 16,000 square feet, so it could accommodate a couple of different uses.
Oh, and a drive-through.
And one could be a drive-through, yeah. You know, if it's retail, it probably wouldn't be a drive-through. If it's a restaurant or something like that, it could have that element.
So when you say restaurant and with drive-through, that means a fast food place? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, none heard, then I'll close the public hearing.
Make the motion.
I don't think so. We don't have any action to take on that, right?
Yeah, we do need action tonight.
Yeah. So I move to approve the first amendment to the Baker Moore LLC Development Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement amendment.
Second. Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our first item of new business, apparent low bid award for Jensen Park Improvement Project. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We did go out to bid for the Jensen Park Improvement Project, which includes the installation of the restroom and expanding the parking lot at Jensen Park. The project was part of the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The apparent low bidder is Rees Construction for $196,177.11. The bid tab is attached, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? None seen? Do we have a motion?
I move to award the Jensen Park Improvement Project to Rees Construction in the amount of $196,177.11 and to authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract.
Second. Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our second item, the BioSolids Hauling Contract. Jim Kelly?
Thank you very much, Councilmen, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mayor Vanny and council members. The City of Arlington has been hauling BioSolids over to Eastern Washington for the past 10 years. We've always been running into problems with snowfall or the ground not being frozen enough in the wintertime to haul BioSolids and land-apply it. And this causes an issue as BioSolids accumulate on the City of Arlington's property. So we went out and we identified another BioSolids firm, Boulder Park, who is in Moses Lake, and we've entered into a contract with Moses Park, we've then, for accepting our BioSolids as an alternative to taking them to Eastern Washington. We then went out to bid for a hauler to haul them over to the Boulder Park facility. We received two bids. Earthworks, I'm sorry, Septic Solutions, oh, Earthwork Solutions is the preferred low bidder with a bid coming in at approximately $75,000 for the remainder of 2025. Any questions?
Heather?
Jim, why is it an estimate for the rest of the year?
Because when they bid on the project, they bid on the price per tons, and sometimes our tons go up, sometimes our tonnage goes down. So that's why, how we value-weighted them is on their price per ton.
Okay.
And Earthworks had the lowest price per ton for hauling.
Okay. My second question is, the budgeted amount was $215,000, and this is for 75 for the remainder of 25. So how much have we spent total through now of that $215,000? I didn't bring it with me. I think we're like 150-something. I didn't bring it with me. I understand. And if you're right, and you almost always are, Chris, this 75 will put us over budget. If it goes over, there's money in the fund, the wastewater operating fund to cover.
Panning it over to Moses Lake, is that where you said they're hauling it to?
Hauling it down to Moses Lake, well, hauling it to Moses Lake, yes, to the Boulder Park facility.
Okay.
No other questions?
Okay.
I move to accept the proposal and enter into contract with Earthwork Solutions for bio-solids hauling and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, contract amendment number one with Rock CM. Jim?
Thank you very much, Mayor Vanny and council members. The City of Arlington, when we started the 211th project, we were very short-staffed on the engineering side and we still have a lot of new people in on the project, so we had to reach out and bring in some construction management staff to help us with that project. We contracted with Rock Construction Management, they were showing, doing a good job for the Smokey Point Park, so we picked them up and we had them help us out with the 211th project. We have additional work coming up now, that is federal grant-funded work that takes a lot more oversight. The 211th project was funded by the state. Federal projects require a lot more oversight and a lot more reporting that goes in, so we need to have assistance with that project. We're looking to amend our scope and our fee with Rock Project Management in the amount of $79,000 to help us out with the Division and Broadway overlay project.
Any questions? Heather?
Same question as before. It would be so nice if we get these cabs altered. So it says budgeted amount, it would be great if there was a space next to it that said funds already expended. So we have 1.3 million to spend on the budget, which is what exactly? 1.3 million with Rock for construction management for the year?
1.3 million for the project. It's a, it's a grant-funded project, we're getting $750,000 approximately in from National Highways of Significant Grant, and then we are doing, and that grant was funding mostly pavement preservation work and ADA and curb ramp rehabilitation.
Yeah.
We decided to also fix the roundabouts and also do, fix the medians, add a sidewalk to the project, so we have TIB money going in to help, TBD money going in to help out with the non-overlay portion of the project.
And so we're asking them to do this additional thing and this additional thing costs 79,000?
That is correct.
And is that coming out of the total of 1.3 million?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Out of the city's component, but then, and a portion of it will be coming out of the grant-funded. We just don't show the grant-funded component on there.
Okay, so of the 1.3 million total budget and everything you just spent with those three sentences, how much is left to spend? See, there's a whole gap on these cabs, you can't tell where we are.
What is the project that we?
We should not be going over the 1.3 million in total.
Because we included construction management fee.
It was included in our total project budget. Okay.
Amount of $130,000 was included in there.
For overages or?
For Division and Broadway project management.
Oh, okay, and this is only 79, so you have some?
I don't want to say it out loud because now Rock is going to come back and give the change order.
Well, let's edit the cab and then you wouldn't have to do that. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, Deborah?
So in the cab here, the history, it says staff negotiated scope of services, and you said Division and Broadway, but it also lists 188th Street Roundabout, and I know we amended our agenda today, something dealing with the bid with 188th. So is 188th included in this? Because we're dealing with a different company, we're dealing with Rock.
It is not included, this is, construction management is separate from construction.
So, okay, so it is included in this one?
Yeah, if construction doesn't go forward, then Rock will not be doing any construction management work on 188th.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Okay, we have a motion?
I move to approve the amendment number one with Rock Project Management for Construction Management Services in the amount of $79,000 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract pending final approval by the city attorney.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, Department of Ecology Grant Award for Solid Waste and Recycling. Again, Jim Kelly?
Thank you very much, Mayor Vanny and council members. This is a regular grant that the city receives from the Department of Ecology to help with our, our city's waste management and education and outreach program. We've been using this grant for the past 20 years since I've been here and it provides a lot of outreach to our community, to our small businesses, to the Cascade Valley Hospital, as well as to our Arlington School District with the development of green teams, so people that would compost and teach compost and recycling to the kid, to the children. We received a grant in the amount of 18,000 and of that, $5,054 has been budgeted out of the city's efforts to go towards a match for that grant.
Any questions? Heather?
Sorry to keep harping on this. So the budgeted amount says 18,000, but the content says the grant is $20,217.71. So which one is correct?
It is, we put $18,000 over for budgeting in 2025 for this year. We then have another budget for 2026 also.
So this is for 2026?
This is for 2025, $18,000 was budgeted for 2025.
Well, then how are you going to count for the extra $2,217.71?
It'll be approved in the 2026, in the 2026 cycle.
Okay, and we only have to commit $5,054.43?
That's our match component.
Over two years.
Over two years.
Over two years, okay. So is that for '25, '26?
Yes.
Okay, so the budget, the revenue was budgeted at 18 and it's actually going to be 20 and the costs are right where they were going to be and you're splitting them in half over the two-year budget?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, none seen?
No, I don't have a question, I was going to read.
Go ahead, Jan.
Okay. I move to accept the solid waste financial assistance grant offered by the Department of Ecology for fiscal years 2025 to 2027 and authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement pending final review by the city attorney.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, Community and Economic Development Quarterly Report. Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Vanny and members of council. So thank you for hearing my first-ever CED quarterly report. So this is for the second quarter, covering time from April to June. So I'll just kind of go over some highlights. We, for our staffing, we did make an offer to the permit tech, so that, hopefully that comes back good. We have a couple of new programs that I'm going to be starting and working with. The first one I'm going to be working with Paul and Jonathan on, so trying to develop a better code enforcement program for some proactive enforcement, especially hearing from the council. So we'll be bringing that back to you as well before we implement it. And then getting a better relationship with some homeowners associations throughout the city. And then we are, we have delayed the Civic Plus permit, permitting software is going live September 1st, actually September 2nd. We just got busy, started the summer season with some permits, some sub-area plans, and so it, there's no reason for it to be in delay, just we needed additional time for staff to learn it and then be able to hold some training sessions in August to get the rest of the city on board. And... Then just an update on some previous contracts. We extended our contract with OTAC and that is almost complete. We have one document left, so that'll be wrapped up this month. Capture Energy, we closed out that project with Smokey Point Park for Phase 2. Makers, we have a contract ongoing for the Island Crossing Sub area plan through the end of October. And then our Department of Commerce paper to digital grant was completed on June 15th and we are still, we ended up keeping on our scanner position, the part-time, through the end of the year. We found some money within, that we already had within budget to keep that person on, so that's really exciting. So we're hoping by the end of the year we'll have at least all the building permits in. And I can give you an update, we have 165 boxes ready for review before shredding, so that is huge and that's only about half of the building permits. So we're getting there, so just give you that update. And then, just working through some training and hiring of, yes, new employees and then obviously my transition to a new role, to a new role and then reassigning some projects and workloads, it's kind of our only issue that we're having right now within our department. And then I provided a list of some upcoming code amendments and sub-area plan information that'll be happening. So I do have one question for you. I do want council's feedback, since this is my first report and I changed it up a little bit. Do you like it? What else do you want to see? You want to see different information? Do you want to see more information? Did it work for you for building permits, code enforcement, that kind of stuff?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Super user-friendly to look at, right?
Then I will keep it the same until I hear different, so just let me know and I can make any change you want or provide information, just need to know ahead of time and I'll get that to you.
And it's cool that you went through the highlights and then we can read the rest, right? So thank you for that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, thanks. Okay, we will, oh.
Thank you. Amy, what can you tell us about Project Cascade, 652,000 square foot building southwest of 59th and 172nd?
It's a distribution, proposed distribution warehouse building.
Distribution warehouse.
Kind of like Smart Cap, Amazon, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Jan?
My question is actually attached to Heather's, the Project Cascade, where it's located? Is that part of North Point?
Yes, it is.
It is. So does everyone understand? North Point is over 400 acres, starts on 67th and 172nd, goes down to Marysville and Marysville got the Tesla building, and so this is, is going to be our first one then for the North Point?
Yeah, that's correct. We, they did do a binding site plan a year or so ago and now they're going back to, they made it two lots and now they're going back to one, so they're not going to, right now they're not following through with the binding site plan, they're going to let that go away and we'll just have one building instead of two, just because of the sheer size.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? None seen, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven, the 2026 lodging tax distribution. Paul?
I updated the spreadsheet based on the conversations that we left off last week and so those I put in your, in your spots so that you could review them. Also, we referred to it in an email I sent out last week. We left off last week with a question about the Glen Eagle Golf Course and their qualifying amount, and so I expressed that in my email, that the 8,000 number that's listed on your spreadsheet is accurate, that it would be within the allowable grant amount for that particular project. It's in red because that's the number I inserted in there. The rest of them are just where we left off last week in discussion. So I'm happy to answer any questions, council house.
Jan?
Yeah, my big concern when I read this was the last column with those changes in it says council recommends, and that's not true. The council did not vote. It was one or two people. Michelle's happy to tell you, it was her, her numbers and everything, but it wasn't council recommends and for it to be in writing. And then my one, I'd like to make a statement on the Arlington Fly-In. It is the largest activity in Arlington and has been for years. And since COVID, the numbers have been going back up to what they were before. They're not quite up there, but they're getting close. Last year was 15,000 people, 300 hotel rooms, and the fly-in is so respected that the directors actually got ahold of community transit and they're allowing the zip line to do a shuttle from the airport down to the city. And when you're looking at where all the money goes, I would assume that the, that the organization that is bringing in the most people and the most money should have at least what they asked for. And, and it was, we didn't just change that. What we, what we did before then was we eliminated the fact when they came in and asked for permit waiver, which we do all the time for all kinds of organizations, and we have done that for years for the airport. And then all of a sudden, we're shutting everything down and I'd sure like to know why.
Heather?
Thanks, Don. I have instructions to talk into the mic this week. And everybody's laughing, okay. I won't repeat what Jan said because I echo some of that, but for me, this again goes back to process and I'd love it if, Michelle, can you explain again, because maybe I forgot over a week, why, why this particular event when there's another one on the spreadsheet that was by LTAC allocated for more funds? I do agree with, with Jan, it's one of the biggest, excuse me, one of the biggest in Arlington, it is the biggest driver of the lodging tax itself by double to the next one behind it. It's the only event in Smokey Point and of the 17 submissions, 12 of these are for funding downtown, which is wonderful, let's keep that small-town charm going strong. But why this event? That's my question for council.
Any other comments or concerns? Deborah?
I just would like to go on the record once again to say that I totally support the LTAC committee, that was a data-driven decision-making tool. And I caution the council members that are going in and, and changing things. I know you don't appreciate the history very much, but that had, that was being done quite a bit and that is why the previous councils brought in the criteria that there is so that Jimmy Rigging couldn't happen or shouldn't happen. It can always happen. And so that concerns me that there is a tendency to go back to that, which hasn't occurred for many years. And so I just put a caution there and, but I want to say that I support the LTAC's process and their criteria and makes me sad that there are some who choose to pick and choose for their own reasoning. Thank you.
Point of order, Mayor Vanny? I didn't get an answer to my question. Why this event?
I'll, I'll answer if you're asking all of us, yeah. So for me, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm looking at the ratings for me and I'm looking at the difference between them. And I'm down here and at like the Glen Eagle one like we were talking about, it was also the same rating, but it got half of what it asked for. So I, just to me, I was like, well, let's just, if they're, if we're going off the ratings and that kind of stuff, I was like, let's just make it a little bit more even than different areas.
Okay, I understand that logic, but we didn't apply, we didn't apply that logic to the whole sheet, just to this event.
Ideally, but then we, because we went by the, the heads and beds or whatever that saying was.
It is a lodging tax.
So which, so that's what, that's what also helped us make our decision on what we ended up doing. And to come up with that, I was thinking about that too over this time, and I was like, one of the things is, is that a lot of those had 100, right? But over 100 heads and beds, over a different period of time. I think, yeah. And so, but they were different ones, but they were the same sponsor. And so I was like, well, that, that equals up to the 300 also or whatever, or it equals even more than that if you add up the different ones. So that's why I was like, well, then that doesn't, there's so much more tax, one weekend of 300 heads and beds isn't making up the entire funding of $185,000 that we're giving.
No, it doesn't. It's the plurality, none of these is a majority.
Exactly.
But again, your logic, I understand completely when you compare it to Skyfest, but it wasn't applied to others. So why this one? Why didn't we apply that logic to the whole thing? And I'll say my bias is to go back to what LTAC recommended, they have an entire process They have an entire process with all the bits and pieces weighed in in their own algorithm. And I don't understand why this one. Why didn't we look at the entire sheet? I agree, we came up with a process last week, and that has logic in it. But we still started with this one event. And I'm looking for, why isn't the logic applied to all of the events? Why just this one are we looking at? Yes, please.
Yvonne?
For me specifically, well, one, first, I want to just put it on record, too. I don't necessarily appreciate being told that I don't appreciate something or that I'm questioning the integrity of something when I haven't actually said those words. And so I just want to put it on record that I don't understand exactly how that. Asking questions and wanting more information does not necessarily mean that I don't appreciate the hard work that goes into this. I've been involved in LTAC since about 2015, probably longer. So I can really, I do understand how much work goes into distributing these funds and being a grant writer with wanting to request these funds. And so to be told by other council members that I don't appreciate the hard work that goes into that and being put, those words being put in my mouth is so frustrating. So I do appreciate all of that. But for specifically looking at any of these events, for me, it really is about the timing. It's about how long an event has been in here. I see LTAC not as a funding source for long-term events, like that have been going on for years, who are actually creating revenue for themselves. I see LTAC as a way to support these events that do bring heads to beds, but they also create new events. I mean, part of the application literally says and gives points to that. And you lose points when you have reduced the size. I mean, the description in LTAC literally is about expanding and growing an event. And when you are constantly bringing it down, for whatever reason, five years ago to today, I, that is what's causing me to ask questions. Not necessarily looking at any, I mean, looking at these events as a whole and being able to see that that percentage of the funding is going out. And agreeing with Alicia too, that looking at these ratings and seeing that some of them or most of these got these higher ratings, but then we're not going to give them the full funding like we did in others. So that's my struggle with this, is that seeing the long-term effect of, at some point, we should be weaning off so that we can bring new. It has to always be revitalizing and bringing in new perspectives and new events and new things. And LTAC literally says that, like, there is wording in the LTAC description of that. And so that is where I'm coming with this.
And again, I understand that as well, but there are many, many long-term events on here. Hometown Holidays has been going on probably for decades. So why didn't we look at Hometown Holidays as an event that needs to be weaned off because they need to grow? Why only Skyfest?
But I do see Hometown Holidays growing and expanding. I do see that happening.
That data presented to us?
But you can, but everything is being shown in the applications. And being able to add more events or growing, like the Ferris Wheel or adding it to bring more entertainers, that to me is the growth, and that is the expansion of what it is.
But then why doesn't your statement that right in the LTAC application, it should make room for new events? Why doesn't that apply to something other than Skyfest?
Oh, I do, I do think it should. Like, that's why I'm supporting all these other events. That's why I kind of liked it, like, why can't we spread it out a little bit more to some, like, why, like Oktoberfest and bringing in some newer, fresher blood kind of thing? Like, I do like that, and that is why I'm supporting or can appreciate wanting to spread the love more.
Okay, and I'd love to spread the love more, but we're only talking about taking money from Skyfest. And your statements, Alicia's statements, make perfect sense if it's just Skyfest compared to something else, but they don't make sense because there's other events on this list that have the exact same situation. There's other long-term events, there's others that.
But you, this is the one that has its own revenues, like a huge revenue source. This is the one that really is, like, again, I think it was brought up last week, being able to really see that in the application process and really being able to take account into that, that there is money coming in from. They can dictate their own revenue with their own ticket sales. And so being able to push that out there and seeing that they have a revenue, they have a way to bring money in. So I don't necessarily think that we need to get rid of all of it. I'm not arguing that we need to get rid of all of it or anything like that.
I'm not getting that from you.
Yeah.
Keep going, keep going.
I just feel like at some level, it's just weaning off just a little bit here, a little bit here.
But only Skyfest?
And it wasn't all of a sudden. It was last year too. This was, this was a concern as of last year. We, this was the same, like, a lot of the same conversations were brought up last year. A lot of the same concerns were brought up last year. Now it's, we're, again, questioning it again. Like, it's being brought up again because there was that concern even last year.
But if we had these concerns, why didn't we refer them to LTAC, who puts this whole algorithm together?
They could have watched the video. I mean, it happened afterwards. It was brought up during the LTAC meeting.
I'm sorry, that's not good enough. That's not good enough. Yvonne, it's not, it's not enough. If we need a change, it's not enough to say they should have watched the meeting. Why didn't we push the information out? And we're all guilty, me too. I'm sorry?
Okay, I guess if.
I'm not looking to point fingers. I'm trying, I'm trying.
I'm going to jump in for a moment and suggest that the council have a dialogue with the council as a body and not necessarily between individual council members. And comments can still be made, but it's, as a matter of decorum, I think the council should be talking amongst themselves as a body, not having individual conversations.
I don't know what that means.
Can I say something? I guess, Heather, to your point, I'm not opposed to shaving off money from Hometown Holidays. I'm not trying to pick on Skyfest. But I guess my point of view is they do have the revenue source or opportunity to raise revenue from their event. They do have other grants that come from the county and other grant sources. I guess I'm still going to vouch for the downtown sound system, so. Just for the record, I still, I still wanted that, but whatever.
I just have one more. I just want to say, what I'm concerned about is a logical process that anyone can follow. And I don't think what we're building here now is a logical process. I don't think council should, I don't think we should go through the list and say, I disagree with that, I disagree with this, we should have done this, we should have done that. They should have watched something. I think there needs to be a logical process, and in my opinion, LTAC offers that.
Michelle?
I just have a couple of comments. I'm not going to negotiate with these numbers because I feel the same as I did last week and last year, to your point. But I do want to say that I resent tossed-out allegations that there's some other reason why we're bringing, I or anybody else is bringing this up. So those allegations have been made clear, and it's by my peer group, from a couple of you. Also, the LTAC committee is an advisory committee by name. And in this letter that you read partially, Jerry, tonight, or maybe I want to address you. This letter that was read, it gives us an ultimatum pretty much on three choices. We have the right to make a decision on what we feel is the best for Arlington. I can't wait for our fall retreat because I've asked Paul to, that's one of my areas that I want to discuss, is the LTAC application and changing it, making it more up-to-date and realistic on who we should be helping. So it would be nice that we accept a vote that happens. It happens all the time when there's votes, and we've never pushed back on the people or, I'll use the word targeted, individuals that voted a different way. So those are my comments. I rest with what these numbers are, and I don't change my opinion from last week.
So to me, Paul, agree, let me know if you agree or not. It sounds like we need to come up with some kind of a solution for the LTAC Commission for Selection process to make it.
So at this point, council's rejected the proposal that came from the LTAC committee. So this is council's opportunity to formulate a new program. We don't, we can't take final action on this tonight, but we do need to get to consensus at some point. Once we have consensus on it, we'll put this into the final draft form and give it to the LTAC committee, who will have 45 days to comment on it. Now, council's going on break after tonight, so that's kind of forced regardless.
Yeah.
But then we can take comments from the committee, and council can make final action after the 45 days.
Okay. Okay, do we just want to go down the line and who wants, who agrees with it, who doesn't?
There's certainly a way to find consensus, if we're there.
Agree with this? That the numbers here, is that what you're asking?
That's.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Assuming, this is where, this is where we left off last time. I'm not, I'm sorry, it says council recommendation. That's what we're trying to get to.
Right.
But this is, was where we left off last week.
All right.
So you're asking us to vote on this?
No, just.
Just say whether you agree.
Do you, do you agree with this or not?
Because it's still just a recommendation, right?
Just, does she agree or not agree?
Yeah. Jan, do you agree or disagree with what's here?
On this?
I do not agree with this one. I agree with the original one that came to us.
Okay. Yvonne?
So is this where we would like, like, if we're advocating for the speakers, the sound system? Like, is this where we would ask for that to be spread out a little bit? Or is this just, no, this is it right here? I guess, I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused on that part.
This is where you left off last week.
Okay.
So council still can make changes to it. What we're trying to work towards is consensus, whether that's tonight or we do it at a future workshop. That's what we need to get to at some point. That's next step.
Okay, so I just want to confirm then, that we'd be like, Skyfest is at 20,000? Summer, the street fair would be 15,445?
Right.
Okay. The golf course would be 8,000?
It'd be 18 total.
18, because it's the bottom number, right?
Yeah.
Fourth of July would be 5?
Correct.
And then Farmer's Market's 10?
Yeah. And then the rest of them remain the same, and you actually have $5 going back into the fund. Or we could give that to the sound system.
Aw, Rob.
He doesn't even pay for taxes.
Got to start somewhere.
Sarah will be happy.
That's funny.
Can you skip me and come back? I'm good, I'm good, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, yes, I accept this.
Deborah?
No.
Rob?
I really want the sound system, but I'll accept what is presented here.
Heather? So our next steps then are to present these numbers then to LTAC? Is that how I understand it, Paul?
Yeah, we'll clean this. Well, this is it, but we'll add the, move the unchanged items over and officially submit it to the LTAC.
Okay, great. Yvonne?
But they can come back with their own recommendations again, right? Like, they could have heard us ask for the speakers, and then they could decide like, oh, we can spread some more love here and get the sound system.
They can comment on it. This is, this would come for council then, with their comments for final action at the end of the 45 days.
Okay, I think we've got that one. We'll go to number eight, the 188th bid rejections. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Jim to explain. This is going to be kind of a team event because Jim's going to explain it. And then I've asked Oscar to help us craft a motion that suits the council's needs tonight.
Thank you very much, Councilman Vanny and council members. This is a tough bidding environment. We've been in very tough bidding environments before. We've had a lot of bids contested. And I appreciate all of the bids that we received for the 188th Street Roundabout Project. This project is kicking off the reconstruction of Smoky Point Boulevard Corridor, a corridor that's going to be a gem of an urban corridor on the west side of Arlington. We received the bids. There was a protest because there were errors in the apparent low bidder. And then after that, the apparent, the apparent low bidder contested the bid protest from other, another bidder. So what we have right now is we have a lot of the bids being protested. We, I turned to WashDOT, and typically they would provide guidance because some of the protests specifically surround the disadvantaged business enterprise component of the bid, and they usually react on that instantly. The feedback I got back from WashDOT is they would stand by whatever our decision is. Given the risk that's associated with this in the delay of the project, given the risk that is going to be associated with this in attorney fees, it is my recommendation that we reject all bids and that we re-advertise this project for bid. We'll be able to evaluate the bids. We will have qualified the bids and hopefully have a selected construction firm when you return from your break.
Deborah?
So Jim, just to help me understand a little bit, maybe, because this is the second time this has happened with 188th, correct?
No, this is the first time it's happened.
The first time, okay, it was another. So what's, because you go through, Chris, I'm pretty sure it's you, who goes through and makes sure all the bids are qualified, correct?
Linda goes through and checks all the bidders and all the paperwork.
Okay, and so then, in that process, she makes sure they're all good. And then, but then some of the bidders have contested that there's problems with another bidder, correct?
We brought, we brought up what, we give WashDOT our certified bid tab, which basically means we have certified the numbers, that the numbers are accurate in the bid tab. And then we gave it our bid tab and our findings of an error in the DBE forms, as well as the bid protest, because the bid protest came in almost immediately after the bids were made available to the public. And we send that over to WashDOT, and then they review it. They send it up to their headquarters, and then headquarters return saying, we're not going to act on this, whatever the city decides, we'll stand behind them. So given the amount of risk that's in this, I think the safest route for us to do is just to reject all bids and reissue a bid advertisement again.
I hear that, and I respect that totally. I'm just, I guess I'm concerned that this will just keep happening to us during this economic climate. But I guess there's no controlling that, right? Other than just making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's legally.
The project and the project manual and the project bid forms that we prepared and sent out to the public are structurally 100% complete. There was no problems with this. These are two bidders contesting falsification of bids that were put on, bids not being put in in time, somebody.
So it's the competition that's happening, and so, and then that concerns me, but.
And the city gets put in the middle. And we have to defend ourselves.
I understand, we need to protect ourselves from that. I totally agree. Just makes me sad that it's the process, but I know it is, so it is what it is. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Alicia?
Are the bid protests or contests, are they a public or are they online? Is that public knowledge?
It's public record, yes.
Okay.
No other questions? Okay, I think we're ready for.
So one of the reasons this is the recommended course of action is that there's no question that the city always has the right to reject all bids. And so I think the motion will be a really simple one, which is that I move to reject all bids on the, and I don't have the formal project name, but the 188th.
I move to reject all bids on the, um, and I don't have the formal project name, but the one eighty-eighth, um, uh, street project. And I think, I think that would be sufficient.
The one eighty-eighth Street Roundabout Project.
Okay.
I move to reject all bids on the one eighty-eighth, uh, round, Street Roundabout Project.
Second question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Motion carries.
Thank you very much and I hope to see you in September with a qualified low bid.
Okay, any comments or reports from council members? Yvonne?
I have a couple, three, I have three. I wrote four, but they're kind of combined. I just want to give a shout out to the Silly Dolly Chamber again. Um, they did an amazing job a couple of weekends ago, maybe it was last weekend, a couple of weekends ago. Um, I, they worked with White Horse IT and did that recycling event and it was a really cool event and we saw a lot of cars come in and go in and I personally got rid of some stuff, so thank you. Um, that was great. And then shout out to Sarah. She's been really patient and, and I'm really excited about the Hispanic Heritage Event and things moving along with it, so, it's in there, the flyers will be coming out soon and I'm excited to see that marketing coming out. She does a great job of keeping us on track with all the events, so thank you. And then the night market, isn't there a night market starting too? Fourth Friday, so just if you're in town, come out. That's a great excuse to come out and check out downtown. And then this weekend's the farm tours, um, so make sure you go on Meet Me in Arlington and check out all the farm tour marketing and who, which farms you can go out and check out and our little town needs your love, so please come out and check out these amazing farms that we have.
Thank you. Michelle?
I attended the graduation, uh, police academy, the first one in Arlington last week and that was pretty amazing and very touching, as Holly was there. Um, so, um, that was such an amazing event and, um, the way they, uh, really made the, uh, graduates feel so special and accomplished. And then, um, I just have a comment that might help Rob out. Um, Sarah, can the speaker system be used for like emergency? Like, I mean, you, we have that tsunami warning, I mean, could it be used for other things?
It's possible. If we did the full, um, main street, we could do announcements through the speakers. But that grant was for phase one.
Oh, I'm just saying, yeah, it's, it's great for emergency, Rob, I mean, you know, so yeah. Or, or this time, we can find you somebody.
Any other?
Thank you, Sarah.
How about your reports? Okay, unseen, Paul, do you have any reports?
I don't think I have anything else tonight.
Nope, okay. I, I also attended the graduation ceremony at the academy and it was great to see, the place was packed. I mean, I don't think there was maybe one or two empty seats in the whole performing center there, but it was really neat to see. There was a lot of people.
A ton of legislators, too.
Yeah, we had a lot of state representation there, different mayors and so forth. Looks like we do have an executive session.
Yes, I'll announce that the, uh, council will be going into executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to RTW forty-two point thirty, point one ten, subsection one I. Uh, the executive session will take approximately fifteen minutes, so it's seven oh eight now, uh, let's say seven twenty-five, is when the council anticipates coming out of executive session and the council does not anticipate taking, uh, final action, after the executive session.
We'll move into executive session, we'll be back in fifteen. Thanks. Good, like to call us back to order, 7:25. I think that's all we got for tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
Back in.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we adjourn.